ran as an independent after losing her progressive endorsement to Freeman. Meanwhile, in the East District progressives took another seat with Jack Hanson defeating incumbent Democrat Richard Dean, who had been looking for a second term on the city council. In the North District Democrat Franklin Paulino won with the support of incumbent David Hartnett, who's leaving the seat due to family obligations. He defeated independent Keenan Christensen, who ran with the endorsement of the progressive party. And lastly, in the South District longtime incumbent Democrat Joan Shannon held on to her seat. She went up against progressive Mohammed Jafar and independent Paco de Francis. Burlington voters rejected ballot question four, a charter change to strengthen and restructure the downtown improvement districts. It would have expanded the district called the DID for short, Beyond Church Street, along with creating nonprofit group to manage the district in replace of the Church Street marketplace. Both were controversial and some worried about a privatization of downtown Burlington. Earlier today, Mayor Moreau Weinberger said if it didn't pass, the city may look to evaluate it in the future.
Voters are being asked to vote on authorizing language and the actual creation of the improvement district comes downstream. So because of that, there's a lot of questions that we aren't really at the stage of fully answering. Perhaps if it doesn't pass, there'll be interest in developing some of the ideas a little further and then bring it back to voters.
Burlington voters also approved the 2019-2020 school budget. That passed with 70% of the vote. Live in the newsroom, Devin Bates, Local 44 News.
And Devin, Christine Lott has been elected the new mayor of Winewski. She previously served on the Winewski Housing Commission and she works for a nonprofit education group. She said last month that her priority as mayor was going to be to look after the city's big picture of financial sustainability and improve communication with residents. Tonight, she told us her interaction with the community is what pushed her to victory.
I was a little bit surprised and very excited since the new year. I've been out every day knocking on doors, attending events, hosting events for people to meet me. And I think all that face time and that word of mouth is what has paid off. I also wanted to do the campaign without spending money to show that what really matters is interaction with, you know, the community itself.
And both Lott and her opponent Eric Covey were Winewski City Councilors that both decided to run for mayor once Seth Leonard announced his resignation back in December. Now, while the Onion City has decided on its mayor, Bennington has decided it doesn't want one. The town had the option of switching from a town manager to an elected mayor, but voters in Bennington have rejected that idea.
South Burlington voters decided not to add a local option sales tax on food, lodging, and alcohol tonight. Right now, the city receives about $3.5 million a year from this tax. The option would have increased it from seven to eight percent, likely doubling revenue. It fell, though, about 300 votes short. The city did decide to increase the rental car tax by 0.5% to help pay for road maintenance.
The town of Colchester will not build a new sewer system. That's according to CCTV. The project would have been on East and West Lake Shore Drives right along Mallett's Bay, and it was designed to remove human waste bacteria from the bay. That's as recommended by engineers and scientists who studied the bay for four years, according to Colchester Public Works Director Brian Osborne. Osborne says right now, the entire area is served by onsite wastewater systems in an area that can't support them because of environmental constraints. This same proposal also failed at the ballot box in 1999.
The candid truth is if we don't start taking actions, even if some people want to question whether this is the right approach or not, we have to start somewhere, and I think this is a good start.
The data shows it isn't going to make a difference in water quality because 90% of the E. coli is from birds and wild animals. And I think that we should be spending our money on things in the lake that are actually going to make a difference.
The sewer project would have been paid for through grants, low interest loans, and local option taxes.
And it seems people who live in the Morris Town, Morrisville area want to go by Morrisville, a move supporters say would clear up serious confusion. From the post office to the airport, people unfamiliar with the area may find themselves not knowing where they are. Well, town meeting day brought a steady stream of voters voicing their opinions on Article Two. Voters decided 296 to 266, that was a close one, in favor of changing the name. Earlier today, voters did voice some strong opinions.
To make it easier for a lot of people, because a lot of the people that are from out of town probably know it more as Morrisville than Morris Town.
Keep it Morris Town, but petition the post office to change the post office to Morris Town, and then we can get rid of all of the schizophrenia from living here.
This vote, by the way, is not binding.
Well, a controversial former town selectman in Alberg is not getting his old job back. Bernard Savage was a selectman in 2015 when the FBI and the DEA raided his home. They seized cars, cash, drugs, and dozens of guns. He pleaded guilty to federal conspiracy to distribute cocaine and oxycodone, and he was sentenced to a year and three months in prison. Savage decided to run again this year while on supervised release now that he's completed his prison term. He received about 30% of the vote, losing to Cheryl Moomi.
Well, it seems people in Burlington and Middlebury would support a ban on plastic bags. Now, this is just a way to gauge public opinion in those communities. But the questions passed by a large margin in the Queen City. That would include plastic stirrers and straws, as well as styrofoam food containers. It passed with more than 80% of the vote. Now, for a closer look at results across the state, you can visit our website, mychamplainvalley.com. Call it the best ticket you will ever get from police, a project spreading positivity throughout Plattsburgh, and also helping make a connection between cops and kids.
And dozens of jobs running to the North Country. Details on a Midwest-based retail chain making its way east.
And our calendar says March, but the weather still firmly says January. Tomorrow morning's wind chills, while not horrible, are only getting colder through the middle of the week. Your forecast is in a few minutes.
You're watching Local News That Matters with Lauren Maloney, Mike Hoey, Sky Tracker Chief Meteorologist Sean Parker, and the Local 44 Sports Team. This is Local 44 News at Ten. You're watching Local 44 News at Ten. Local news that matters to northern New York, Vermont, and New Hampshire.
Let's get to some other news on this town meeting day in Plattsburgh. The city police department is on a mission to give out 100 tickets to kids.
Yeah, those tickets are called positive tickets, and they're serving as a reward for young people. Local 44's Torrance Gosher takes a look at how they'll work.
Plattsburgh Police Local 812, a law enforcement union, has decided to ticket your children.
It was kind of play on what police officers do. We don't just give out bad tickets. We give out good tickets for rewarding behavior.
City Police Chief Levi Ritter says it's about building a community relationship starting with young people.
We have 100 of these, and if we gave out all 100, that would be a very, very good thing.
Here's what the ticket looks like. Chief Ritter says officers are looking for kids who use a helmet while riding a bike, use good manners in public, or simply stay active.
Trying to be an example, and that hopefully that's what's imparted to the children that are affected, is that they can be examples too by doing this.
They can then turn that ticket in for a free slice of pizza here at Hobie's Sports Den. Co-owner Ziad Saseen encourages kids to get as many tickets as they can.
We got a lot of pizza.
He is donating every slice of pizza in hopes of building a stronger Plattsburgh community, in hopes children are able to see police officers as a positive role model.
They do an awesome job in the community, and we need to be more helpful with them. I think, you know, it brings the kids more outside instead of being on their iPad or tablet or whatever, or TV.
And he hopes the tickets instill the importance of being genuine and nice to others.
This is an opportunity where we can show that we don't just hit people with tickets or arrest people or haul them off to jail. We are engaged in our community, and we do appreciate them.
Torrance Gosher, Local 44 News, Plattsburgh.
And another Plattsburgh business is part of this, too. Studley Printing and Publishing has stepped in to create and donate those tickets.
Researchers received a big gift to help the dying bee population to the tune of $500,000. UVM leaders say it was anonymously sent to UVM's Gunned Institute for the Environment. The program has been internationally recognized for research on bees and how climate change has contributed to the decline. The money will go towards creating a new fund that will offer grants to local, national, and international projects to study bees and other pollinators.
In Business Matters tonight, Plattsburgh is going to be home to a new store sometime later this year. Runnings is a Minnesota-based retail chain that focuses on home goods and garden and farm supplies. The company is planning a complete overhaul of the former Kmart store at Champlain Center South. Runnings' marketing director tells us it could open as soon as this September. If you count both full-time and part-time employees, 60 to 70 people are expected to work there. Running CEO Dennis Reed also tells us, quote, "We open new stores in places like Plattsburgh where there is a strong demand from customers who live and love the rural lifestyle. We're excited to open our doors." Now, Runnings actually already has two other stores in our region, in Malone, New York, and Clermont, New Hampshire.
Okay, put your thinking caps on. Tickets are officially on sale for the Joe's Pond Ice Out Contest. It is the infamous game in West Danville, testing your ability to select the closest time and date when that clock will stop sending a brick through the ice. Tickets are $1, and you can buy them at locations across the Northeast Kingdom and also online. The deadline, by the way, to buy tickets is April 1st. As of last week, we're told the ice was 24 inches thick. Okay, the big star who keeps giving back.
Yeah, coming up in our new Celebrating Women series, you'll learn how an Oscar winner never forgets the area of New England where she came from.
And Joe's Pond's going to be iced in for quite a while. There is sign of a warm-up, though, even by the middle of this month. Will it be enough to ice out the lake? Probably not, but it's a trend that we like to see if we're all suffering from winter fatigue. We'll talk more about that and the short-term cold snap. Your forecast is next.
Now, Chief Meteorologist Sean Parker with your Sky Tracker forecast.
Hey, good evening, everybody. It's still cold. We've been colder, but it's early March. Our average lows are about 17, and we've got nowhere to go but down from here. And that's where Burlington is currently. 13 Montpelier, 13 in Newport, 13 in Plattsburgh, 13 in Messina, 13 in Springfield. I don't like all those 13s if you're a superstitious person. It just means we're going to get colder and colder. Not that I'm superstitious, but I am a little stitious, Michael Scott. Skies are partly to mostly cloudy tonight. We do have a couple of flurries that are around, but nothing to write home about. You're not going to have to shovel. You may have to dust off the windshield in the morning, but in a very isolated manner. The snow that covered the road earlier along Route 78 and along, say, Route 104A in and around the Fairfax area, that's done. Our Lake Effects Snow Machine, which is just pummeling parts of western New York, it's shifting to the south. That's good news for us if you don't want the snow, because that's where all of our moisture is coming from. Future Tracker overnight shows just a couple of flurries now and again, mainly over the highest terrain, little to no accumulation there. So I don't foresee any issues for the morning drive on Wednesday. It's just going to be chilly. Temperatures are going to drop to around 10 in the Champlain Valley, firmly in the single digits from Montpelier to Newport, 7 Rutland, 3 Saranac Lake, 5 in Messina. Periodic wind gusts between 5 and 15 miles an hour are going to put wind chills at times around zero in the Champlain Valley, below zero Montpelier, Lebanon, and Springfield, well below zero in the mountains. So we've got a very January-like start to Wednesday. As the day continues, we'll have a solid mixture of sunshine and cloudiness, perhaps a couple of snow showers around mainly over the highest terrain, limited amounts of accumulation at the very most there. Most of us don't see any snow at all. We'll see more sunshine than snow, but that doesn't mean it's going to be warm. High temperatures will be right back to where they were today, essentially, high teens and lower 20s. 22 Lebanon, 24 Rutland, 22s and 23s in and about the Champlain Valley. Wednesday night into Thursday, a couple of flurries now and again, skies feature, while a solid mixture of clearing and cloudiness. This is Thursday morning now at 7 o'clock. Thursday should be a very quiet, pleasant weather day, snowy speaking, because there's really not going to be any, apart from the highest terrain of the southern greens, a flurry or two there. It's just going to stay cold, only in the high teens and the lower 20s. Remember, average is about, oh, 35 to almost 40. Excuse me, we will get there, but not for another week to two weeks. The March 13th to 19th temperature outlook shows us with a solid opportunity to go above normal. What's normally ask? 39 and 41. 39 on the 13th, 41 on the 19th. So 40s look like a solid bet come the middle and end of the month of March. We just have to get through, oh, more than just a couple of days of January-like air. 20s and 30s with increasing amounts of sun through Friday. Saturday looks great, 34 with plenty of sunshine. We spring forward Saturday night, and then we'll have, well, our next storm come in on Sunday, and this one looks to be a mix. Starting off as sleet snow and freezing rain Sunday morning, transitioning to plain rain Sunday afternoon with some wind, with highs in the 40s. That's your latest check of the forecast. Mychamplainvalley.com's got you covered. As we work through the spring semester, teachers, if you would like one of our meteorologists to come visit in the classroom, shoot me an email, sparker@mychamplainvalley.com. We will set it up. It's absolutely free, and we love doing it. Mike, Lauren.
Well, she's inspiring children while raking in the awards. How Viola Davis makes sure her hometown is not forgotten.
Plus blaming the victims, at least partially. Find out why the owners of the limo that crashed in Skowhary, New York are doing that.
You're watching Local 44 News at Ten. Local news that matters to northern New York, Vermont, and New Hampshire.
Well, March is National Women's History Month, so our parent company, Next Star Media Group, has chosen this month to celebrate the influence women have had on all aspects of American life.
And tonight, we kick off our campaign in Hollywood. Female directors, producers, actors, all standing up to the status quo, taking on commanding roles in an industry once ruled by men.
And Viola Davis is no exception. You can see her every week on the hit ABC show, How to Get Away with Murder, on our sister station, Local 22. And as Shannon Hagy tells us, she may be a big star, but she continues to give back to where it all began for her.
From her moving performance in The Help, to her Emmy-winning role in How to Get Away with Murder, to her Oscar-winning performance in Fences, Viola Davis has climbed to the top of the list of Hollywood heavyweights. But before she ever walked the red carpet, she walked the halls of Rhode Island's Central Falls High School.
Mimicking his hiccuping.
Mimicking his hiccuping.
Inside that high school today, her sister, Dr. Dolores Grant.
The big black bug.
Bleed blue blood.
Bleed blue blood.
Teaches the students who hope to follow in Viola's footsteps.
654321, 654321, 654321. My sister Viola has given so much of her time, money, any type of opportunity she's been able to expose the children in the city to, as well as parents. She's gone out of her way, above and beyond.
Viola's success and regular contributions to her hometown inspired the city to name this street right next to the high school after her three years ago. It was during a fundraiser for Central Falls High School back in 2012 that Viola told us giving back is her life's purpose.
You know, she came in and spoke to our senior class. Afterwards, we had an opportunity for the students to connect and meet with her, and every single one of those interactions was genuine. You know, they wanted to take pictures, they wanted to talk to her, they wanted to interact with her, and she did it in such an original way where every student and every person that had an opportunity to connect with her was able to sort of have their moment with Viola.
Dolores says Viola is constantly checking in on kids in the high school, especially those in the thespian society Dolores started, quietly paying for field trips to New York City, even giving her input on students' work.
I've had students ask me, Mrs. Grant, can you ask your sister what she thinks of my monologue? And we'll tape it. I send it to my sister, and she gives her feedback.
In a city where the poverty rate currently stands at over 30%, Dolores takes pride in the fact that her sister Viola is giving students hope that they too can make it big.
Yeah, Lauren, how'd you like to write a monologue, perform it, and then have an Oscar winner critique it for you?
You know, I've got to say, I'm a native Rhode Islander, just like Viola Davis, and just, we have loved and admired her for so many years. I mean, she is the epitome of what a woman should be doing, and she does well for Central Falls, that's for sure.
Plenty of reason to look up to her, for sure.
Love her.
Well, you'll be able to see more stories like the one that Shannon Hagy just brought you in our special report, Celebrating Women.
Join us here on Local 44 Monday at 5:00. You will also meet some remarkable local women and their influence on life in Champlain Valley. When we come back, they're calling it an act of God.
Coming up, how a limo company's legal team is defending it after the tragic Skowhary, New York crash.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Things are mainly quiet in valleys, but we've still got a couple of mountain snow showers around, light dusting to maybe an inch, inch and a half, across areas above 1,500 feet in a very isolated sporadic manner. I don't see any issues for your forecast first in the morning drive on Wednesday. Temperatures will be in the single digits, wind chill at times will be hovering around zero, and then the rest of Wednesday has increasing sun, but still a very January-like feel. We will get back into the 30s soon, especially by the weekend, but we're still looking at a weekend mess. It's on Tuesday, it's Tuesday night. We can talk about the weekend now. That's at least when our next more inclement weather arrives, that's not cold. We'll continue on talking about your forecast now on Local 44.
From WFFF, this is Local 44 News.
We start this half hour with another recap of results from Town Meeting Day 2019.
Yeah, Local 44's Devin Bates is live in the newsroom to check back in with us about some of Burlington's city council races and key ballot issues. One of the Burlington City Council races up for consideration tonight, incumbent Jane Nodelle, losing her city council seat, falling to progressive Perry Freeman. Richard Dean losing his reelection bid as well to Jack Hanson. And in the East, that's in the East District. And in the North District, Democrat Franklin Paulino beat out incumbent, rather, getting the support of incumbent David Hartnett, leaving the seat because of family obligations. He is defeated. Independent Keenan Christensen, Christensen ran with the endorsement of the progressive party. The only incumbent that was on the ballot tonight seeking reelection, incumbent Democrat Joan Shannon in the South
Joan Shannon in the South District. She faced progressive Mohamed Jafar and incumbent Paco de Francis. Shannon being reelected with nearly 2/3 of the vote. It's also worth noting in all this that Burlington voters have rejected ballot question four, which would have changed the city charter and expanded the city's downtown improvement district beyond the boundaries of strictly Church Street. Another issue out on the ballot tonight, Christine Lott will serve as Winuski's new mayor. Lott previously served on the Winuski Housing Commission, and she works for a nonprofit education group. She said last month that her priority as mayor was going to be looking at the city's big picture when it comes to financial sustainability and improving communication with residents. Tonight, she told us, her interaction with the community is what helped her get over the hump.
I was a little bit surprised and very excited since the new year. I've been out every day knocking on doors, attending events, hosting events for people to meet me. And I think all that face time and that word of mouth is what has paid off. I also wanted to do the campaign without spending money to show that what really matters is interaction with, you know, the community itself.
Both Christine Lott and her opponent Eric Covey were Winuski city councillors who decided to run once Mayor Seth Leonard announced in December that he would resign. And while Winuski has decided on its new mayor, Bennington has decided that it doesn't want to have one at all. The town had the option today of switching from a town manager to an elected mayor, but voters in Bennington have rejected that idea.
Well, it seems people who live in the Morris Town, Morrisville area want to go by Morrisville, a move supporters say would clear up serious confusion. From the post office to the airport, people unfamiliar with the area may find themselves not knowing where they are sometimes. Voters decided 296 to 266 in favor of changing the name, but this is just a non-binding question. For a closer look at other results around the region, visit our website, mychamplainvalley.com.
Some of the other news we've been following tonight. New York State Police are investigating the death of a Vermont Lager in Altona. Troopers say 58-year-old David Driscoll of Milton was hit by a falling tree. When police reached him, he was unconscious and he was not breathing. Officers tried to save him, but Driscoll died at the scene. There is going to be an autopsy at CVPH in Plattsburgh, but at least for the moment, troopers believe his death was an accident.
To crime watch now, a student at Green Mountain College has been arrested after police say he threatened to shoot at least two faculty members and a student. Vermont State Police say 19-year-old Aaron Sanchez of Plainfield, New Jersey, who is also an RA, was arrested. While the alleged threats were reported this morning, police say they originated last night. There was no immediate harm, we're told, to anyone at the school or the general public. For now, Sanchez is not allowed on campus. He will appear in court at a later date. Around the region now, the owners of Prestige Limousine are beginning their legal defense, five months after 20 people were killed when one of their limos crashed in New York. Now, as Local 44's Peter Eliopoulos reports, the only people they blame are the victims and God.
Lawyers for Prestige Limousine are claiming the loss of life from the deadly Skowhary crash should be placed at least partially on the victims. This in a legal response to a wrongful death lawsuit filed by the family of Amanda Rivenberg, one of the 17 passengers who died in the limo crash.
But they're denying that they did anything wrong.
The attorney for the insurance company representing Shaheed and Naman Hussain and Prestige Limousine Service filed this answer in state Supreme Court, saying any and all risks, hazards, defects, and dangers alleged are of an open, obvious, and apparent nature, and were known or should have been known to the plaintiffs.
The dangers were open, obvious, and apparent. So we should have known, Amanda should have known not to get into their vehicle, which is absurd.
Elizabeth Grogan, representing the Hussains in the civil suit, wrote, Rivenberg's injuries were caused by the plaintiff's failure to use and wear seatbelts at the time of the occurrence.
For them to say that against someone who clearly lost her life because she put her health and her life in the hands of these guys, and they did something wrong, it's a little outrageous.
The defense attorney also adding a third party or parties may be to blame. The attorneys for the limo company also saying the Hussains were not negligent, and the injuries were the result of an act of God for which this defendant was and is not responsible.
They're blaming people who relied on them to provide a safe ride, and they're saying, well, it's their fault. They should have known better, which is just outrageous.
Peter Eliopoulos reporting for us. Now, we did reach out to the defense attorney, offering her an interview or to provide a comment, but she told our sister station that she declined. Cutting money to an ambulance fleet.
Yeah, emergency service workers from across New York State descend on the Capitol to do something about it. That's next.
You're watching Local News That Matters with Lauren Maloney, Mike Hoey, Sky Tracker Chief Meteorologist Sean Parker, and the Local 44 Sports Team. This is Local 44 News at Ten. You're watching Local 44 News, local news that matters to northern New York, Vermont, and New Hampshire.
We're back with Health Matters and a rally for healthcare funding at New York's Capitol that draws hundreds of people.
One group in particular has already seen crippling cuts. Local 44's Ayla Ferrone explains why EMS services can't stand to lose another dime.
EMS services across the state have been seeing drastic cuts to funding, and more could be on the way.
Some of the agencies right now are right on the bubble as far as being in service and not being in service financially.
Lester Fremantle is the immediate past chairman for the United New York Ambulance Network and says the governor is proposing additional cuts that will be detrimental to EMS services.
Medicaid right now is seriously underfunds EMS and healthcare in general.
Services across the state, including in the Capitol region and in western New York, have been suffering.
Five agencies that have closed or consolidated or ceased operating.
Mike Bovee is the deputy chief for Monroe Ambulance Transportation. They've already absorbed several agencies that have closed down.
We cover several hundred square miles of territory.
He says if the proposed cuts are approved, he'll lose $260,000.
We could purchase probably three ambulances with that and stock them.
I think more healthcare cuts is not the solution. Quite honestly, the system needs to be reformed.
Assemblyman and pharmacist John McDonald says lawmakers need to find money somewhere to fund this.
People like to complain about their taxes, but the time you don't want to be complaining about is when you're laying on the floor having a stroke or having a heart attack.
And Fremantle says EMS should be considered an essential service.
A lot of folks don't realize this is not covered. It's not essential services. It's not covered with their tax dollars.
And if it's not...
People are going to come to the realization that they're going to call 911, and there's not going to be an ambulance going to show up. Half an hour, it might be an hour.
Well, again, that was Ayla Ferrone with that story. The final version of the New York State budget is due in a couple of weeks, on April 1st.
March, Red Cross Month, we urge you to help out with Vermont's critical need for blood right now by donating. Tomorrow's Drive of the Day is at the Elks Lodge, 345. It's going on from 11 until 4:00. Well, okay, the high school boys' basketball playoffs started today as South Burlington travels not too far away to CU.
And coming up, see if the Wolves can step up, or if the Redhawks send them packing.
And our calendars say March, but only early March. It's still pretty cold, but more of a January brand of cold. We'll talk about that, wind chill, some sunshine, and when we'll finally make it back into the 30s. That's all next.
Local news that matters on Local 44 News. Now, Chief Meteorologist Sean Parker with your Sky Tracker forecast.
It's chilly, hats, gloves, coats, heaters, seat heaters, heated blankets, et cetera, et cetera. More of the same. What a season it's been, right? 10 Newport, 17 in Burlington, 11 in Lebanon, 16 in Rutland, 8 in Saranac Lake. Now, we've been colder. I just think so many of us are really at our wits' end with this. Although, not everybody, a couple of people in this building saw the warm-up map coming in the middle of the month and said, no, I don't like that forecast, I want to ski as long as I can. With the status of our snowpack now, we're still going to be skiing for several more weeks to come. We are actually adding a little bit to our mountains tonight. Very light flurries, a dusting to maybe an inch, inch and a half before the moisture runs out. What it means is good news for the mountains and good news for us trying to drive around in this stuff overnight, because in the valleys and in many, even in our mid slopes, there's not going to be any snow, which means roads should be in pretty good shape. Temperatures will be around 10 in the Champlain Valley in the morning, closer to zero in the Northeast Kingdom in the Upper Valley, 6 in Middlebury, 3 Saranac Lake, 5 in Messina. Periodic wind gusts will put wind chills around zero essentially everywhere. Some of us are going to feel like it's a little bit below zero in the mountains, or a little bit below zero at times. And in the mountains, it just gets worse, feeling like the dead of winter again. Spring is on the 20th. We spring forward this coming weekend. So everything is falling in our favor, but as you know, March is still that real iffy month where Mother Nature's trying to give us these last gasps of winter. But overall, by the end of the month, we should see it at least loosen the grip a little bit. Peaks of sunshine will be around during the day Wednesday, along with a couple of snow flurries now and again. Overall, little to no accumulation with those, but our temperatures continue to struggle, only in the high teens and the lower 20s. Wednesday night into Thursday, quiet weather's going to continue, a couple of mountain flurries now and again, but overall, no big issues. And guess what? Thursday's going to be exactly like that, but with a lesser chance at a mountain flurry. Expect a solid mixture of sunshine and cloudiness as we hit Small Friday. Anybody out there call Thursday Small Friday? When I lived in Tallahassee, they called it that all the time.
Friday Junior.
I don't know why. Friday Junior, sure. But Small Friday, just another one to toss in there. It's Thursday, though. Just another Thursday in 2019 because it's going to be cold. Highs will only be in the high teens and the lower 20s. But thinking a little bit farther ahead, this is the warm-up map I was talking about, the eight to 14-day temperature outlook. Solid chance that we're going to go above average up and down the eastern seaboard. What's average for us? About 40. So by the time we hit the middle and end of the month, we've got a solid opportunity at going 40 to 45. So it's not, I'd think, it's not 60s and 70s, but 40s to near 50, well, I think, feel quite nice. But we still got a ways to go. 20s to near 30 through the end of the week, low 30 Saturday, beautiful weekend day there to start it. And then we spring forward and we get messy. Sunday in the morning, expect a wintry mix. It transitions to mainly just plain rain during the afternoon, and that's our next best shot at 40, so it's not going to be a sunny one. That's your latest check of the forecast. We're sprinting through the spring semester, and if you want one of our meteorologists to come out, talk to your class, it's absolutely free. We go through an awesome presentation describing how we forecast the weather. We show off the studio, too. Shoot me a note, s parker@mychamplainvalley.com, and we will set it up. Now, it's time for sports, and when I asked Frank how he wanted me to toss to him, he said, just say, ugh, Frank's here, so, ugh, Frank's here.
I sure am, Sean. And the UVM men's basketball team closing the book on the regular season and celebrating the seniors against UMass Lowell tonight. Coming up, see if the Cats can take care of the Riverhawks and cap off the campaign with a W.
Local news that matters on Local 44 News. Now, Local 44 Sports.
Guys, you'll have to excuse me, I'm getting a little choked up. It's the last game in Patrick Gym for the seniors on the UVM men's basketball team. Oh, wait, no, Vermont has home court through the playoffs. I guess I'll keep the tears back for now. The Catamounts already have the one seed locked up, now just trying to take down UMass Lowell to close out the season on a high note. Senior night tonight at Patrick Gym as the Cats celebrate Ernie Duncan and Sam Dingba. And this senior class has set records as the Catamounts play host to the UMass Lowell Riverhawks. Just two minutes in, who else? It's the senior, Ernie Duncan, wide open, hits the three ball, put the Cats up 3-2. Just one minute later, Anthony Lamb picks off the ball and feeds Ben Shungu for the one-handed jam. UVM leads by six. Going to fast forward, five minutes left in the first half, Vermont leads by 11, but it's the second-leading scorer in the conference, Christian Lutete firing it from beyond the arc. UVM still ahead, 31 to 23. Now midway through the second half, Cats with control. Steph Smith creates a little bit of space for himself and drives in for the mid-range jumper. Vermont is up 65-44. Vermont is up 65-44. Six minutes left to play, Steph Smith winds up and tosses to Rob Petty for the vicious dunk. UVM left by 21, and the Cats keep it up in the final minutes to take down the Riverhawks, 74 to 57. And March Madness doesn't just apply to college hoops because the high school playoffs are upon us. First round starting up today for the Vermont Boys, and South Burlington is on the road to take on six-seeded Champlain Valley. The Wolves finishing 10-10 this season, snagging the 11 spot. The CBU faithful pack in the gym for their 13-7 Redhawks, and this one is a battle. Just a one-point lead for SB in the second, but Evan Parker sees what he likes and just nails the three, 17-13 Wolves. Still the second, CBU on a run, and Ethan Harvey caps it off with a strong inside finish. Seven unanswered points, and the Redhawks lead 20 to 17. And in the second half, they're starting to pull away. Noah Martin drives inside for the pull-up J, and it's good. CBU cruising to a 36-28 lead, but it's not over. SB on a 10-3 run, and Evan Parker says, "Guys, I got this," slices through the D and gives the Wolves a one-point lead after all that. They complete the comeback. Wolves upset the Redhawks and get the 54-46 victory. And elsewhere in D1, boys' hoops, no upsets in the top two seeds. Top seeded Rice Memorial having no problem with Colchester, 67-45, and number two Rutland dominating Spalding, 66-44. Move down in the bracket, higher seeds getting it done once again. Rutland taking care of Linden, 70 to 43, and St. J. Downey-Burlington, 71-56. Well, it's playoff time all around, but in collegiate skiing, the UVM team already reached the peak, and it just happens to be on the Cats' home trails right here in Stowe. And it'd be an understatement to say the host school is well-represented. 24 qualifiers for Vermont with a heat from St. Mike's and Middlebury as well. But for these Catamounts, some are taking world championship experience to the collegiate stage, but that doesn't calm the high stress in a fight for a national title.
College racing and World Cup racing are a lot different. In college racing, you're here for the team and mostly just the team. You're not here for an individual's result. So I actually think racing in college is a lot harder than racing on a world circuit because you have a lot more to think about, because you have a lot more on the line.
Like at the Olympics, if I go out, if I do a mistake, it's my problem, but if I want to perform here for my team and if I do a mistake, it's not just me, then it's my team.
And events get started up in less than 12 hours. Championships begin with a men's 10K freestyle Nordic contest at 10 a.m.
Dan Frank with UVM Men's Basketball. It should also be noted, you did a better job of containing your tears than one chief meteorologist, Sean Parker, did of containing his disappointment at your presence a few minutes ago.
Hey, I mean, can't please them all, right? At least you guys look happy to see me, right?
Absolutely.
Always happy to see you, Frank.
Thank you.
And by the way, the weather's gonna be beautiful tomorrow. The sun will be shining, right, for those skiers? Not too cold?
Yeah.
They can handle it? Thank you, Frank.
We'll wrap things up for you on Local 44 News at 10 right after this.
Local News That Matters on Local 44 News. You're watching Local 44 News, local news that matters to northern New York, Vermont, and New Hampshire.
So winter recreating season continues.
For a little while longer, certainly.
Trying to find the optimism out there. I was on Lake Champlain three of the last four days, and there's still tons of ice. We talked about Joe's Pond, still two feet thick there. So what I'm getting at is that it's still cold, but we don't want to all of a sudden go from zero to literally 60 or 70 degrees in a day, or else all that'll melt and flooding will be a nightmare. So all signs point to a slow and gradual warm-up through the end of the month, which is good news and cool news.
You know what's really bad news?
Uh-oh, what?
Is springing ahead this weekend.
True enough.
I hate it.
Lighter later in the day is way better.
No, it's not. I love the dark.
The loss of sleep hurts for one night at least.
Follow Local 44 News wherever you are, on mychamplainvalley.com, Facebook, Twitter, or our mobile app. Local 22 News starts now with your forecast first.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Relatively quiet weather continues tonight. Still some light mountain snow showers, maybe even a couple of bursts of snow across the highest terrain above 2,000 feet. Otherwise, our bigger weather story is still the cold. Lows are gonna drop to right around 10 degrees or so by morning. This is Wednesday, March 6th already, and we've got lows around 9. Average is about 18. We're gonna be nowhere close. In fact, some of us won't even get to 18 tomorrow. Northeast Kingdom looking at you. Champlain Valley, you're gonna top out around 22 with peaks of sunshine. And then we don't even sniff 30 until maybe the weekend. Talk more about that now on Local 22 News at 11.
From WVNY, this is Local 22 News at 11.
Well, thanks for wrapping up your Tuesday night with us. I'm Mike Hoey.
And I'm Lauren Maloney. The results coming in from Town Meeting Day 2019. We begin with numbers out of Burlington.
Yeah, Local 22's Devin Bates is live in the studio right now with an update on several city council races and some of the major ballot items tonight. Devin?
Well, Mike, four out of the 12 Burlington City Council seats were on the ballot today, and out of three incumbents, only one managed to hold on to their seat. In the Central District, Perry Freeman defeated incumbent Jane Nodel, who served on the council for 19 years. Nodel ran as an independent after losing her progressive endorsement to Freeman. Meanwhile, in the East District, progressives took another seat with Jack Hanson defeating incumbent Democrat Richard Dean, who had been looking for a second term on the city council. Meanwhile, in the North District, Democrat Franklin Paulino won with the support of incumbent David Hartnett, who's leaving the seat due to family obligations. He's defeated independent Keenan Christensen, who ran with the endorsement of the Progressive Party. Lastly, in the South District, longtime incumbent Democrat Joan Shannon held on to her seat. She went up against progressive Mohammed Jafar and independent Paco de Francis. Burlington voters rejected ballot question four, a charter change to strengthen and restructure downtown improvement districts. It would have expanded the district, called the DID for short, Beyond Church Street, along with creating nonprofit groups to manage the new district in replacement of the Church Street marketplace. Both were controversial, as some worried about a privatization of downtown Burlington. Early today, Mayor Moro Weinberger said if it didn't pass, the city may look to evaluate it in the future.
Voters are being asked to vote on authorizing language, and the actual creation of the improvement district comes downstream. So because of that, there's a lot of questions that we aren't really at the stage at fully answering. Perhaps if it doesn't pass, there'll be interest in developing some of the ideas a little further and then bringing it back to voters.
Burlington voters also approved the 2019-2020 school budget. That passed with 70% of the vote. Live in studio, Devin Bates, Local 22 News.